Thank you for joining us. This is the March 13th, 2014 meeting of the East Fishkill Town Board. This is a work session, and at a work session is just really a time when the town board can meet as a group and discuss matters pertaining to the town. So with that, would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. A few things on the agenda, but before we get started, I just did want to make some comments. Last Wednesday was Unfunded Mandate Relief Day in Albany. Well, actually, it's like lobbying week. I think everybody goes up to Albany to lobby last week, so somebody said that Wednesday was going to be Unfunded Mandate Relief Day, so I schlepped up to Albany. Don't like to leave East Fishkill, but we did. County legislator, Marc Wharton, was kind enough to go with me. He was my navigator. So we went to Albany, and it was scheduled by a senator from not our district, another state senator. So we went up to Albany, and we got to the office, we got to the right place. We were there with early in the morning. There's about 15 other people from different municipalities, and our thing was unfunded mandates. Now, unfunded mandates are those things that we get from New York State and the federal government. They pass down laws and rules that we have to follow, but no money to help us do this. And a couple of other unfunded mandates which really are going to hit home hard is Medicaid is just blowing through the roof. I did a little study, and New York State pays, I think, $48 billion a year in Medicaid. This is 27% than the second state in the Union, which is California, and it's just escalating out of control. The counties pick up the bulk of the Medicaid, of course, that comes with county taxes. And with us, it's the pension system. There's really no pensionary. There is pension reform, I'll say, I think they made it, what did they make, Tom, a tier?
Tier six.
Tier six, which will probably give us some pension relief 20 years down the road. But there's really no help in getting these systems, these great programs reined in. So we went up there. So Marc and I go up there, and we met in one of our senators' offices, and he stopped in for about two seconds, and then we were left with staffers. So we wandered around, they heard us all around, a little like cattle, they heard us all around the Capitol Building. We went down to the Assembly Chambers, met some Assembly people. And then we were trundled off to different staffers, really met basically staffers all day. And it was really, I don't know, when you go to Albany, I think when you go to Capitol Building, you realize there's a lot of very important people there. So everybody there was very important, except for us. Nobody wanted to hear about unfunded mandates, I mean, very few. There's a couple staffers up there who are very good. Daphne was one, another girl named Mandy, they'd been there for years, and they got it. They understood. But it was very disappointing, and Senator Gibson, actually, we did run into Senator Gibson, he's our state senator, and spoke with him for a bit, and he understands the problem with unfunded mandates. So I just want to say, I left Albany, Marc Wharton and I left Albany a little bit early that day, and it's unfortunate because we realized that there's most likely going to be no relief on unfunded mandates. You could talk to them, they don't get it. Honestly, they don't get it. A few of them get it, and what I see, and I made some notes here, what do unfunded mandates do to the town of East Fishkill? Well, and I'm going to talk a little about this in Highway later on. What happens is, when your pension increase goes up, Marc, what are pension increases gone up over the last few years? They've like 20% every year. We're up to what, $1.4 million this year?
Yeah, almost $1.7 million.
$1.7 million. So what happens, so where does this money come from? This is one thing the state government doesn't understand, is it comes right now, a lot of it's hemorrhaging from our highway budget. Because we sat down the other day with the Highway Superintendent, we're looking at our roads, and roads need work. And we had this discussion at the end of the year last year. But when we have to keep paying more money to the pension system, more money into these unfunded mandates, it's taking money from other parts of the town. So it's very, very difficult for us to maintain our operations, maintain our infrastructure, and still deal with these mandates. So that's why I went to Albany. We came back, we really don't feel there's going to be any relief on these unfunded mandates. And I know in my heart, what we need to do here is grow our industrial and commercial tax base. I mean, we can't, understand a tax cap is a good thing, but we're deferring things that, as I said to one woman, what are we on a call, five years down the road? When our roads are crumbling, we don't have people to be able to plow the snow because our equipment has failed. And she was like, well, I don't know. I said, well, we have a tax cap, but we have no mandate relief. And this is really where we're going, I mean, down the road unless we do something. But what we can do on our local level, and this is what I'm going to ask the board to do at our voting meeting in a couple weeks, identify an area over an I-1 zone, over between Route 52, 84, and Limekill Road as economic redevelopment priority site. We need to do this. We need to bring businesses in. The only way we can avoid falling to this issue, which is going to trap a lot of other towns before it gets us, is to build out or encourage industrial and commercial development. So we have to expand our base, and that's what we're going to be talking about in a couple weeks. And one thing I do want to say, every now and then I get calls from Dutchess County EDC, or sometimes out of blue from companies that want to come here. Spoke with one a while back, a couple weeks ago, and it was a very large Italian company looking to do a sort of bottling facility here. And now, who would have thought, to be honest with you? But I said, we have great water, so please come. But there were some issues that didn't work for them, and the zoning wasn't quite right for what they want to do with the warehousing and stuff. So we need to make our zoning more flexible to allow us to develop our I-1 zones, and I just want to leave it at that. And we'll be talking about this, but if we don't bring in more business, or we don't expand what I call our anchor stores, we're going to be hurt. And I want to avoid that, because we have a very good record of maintaining, I think, our roads, although it's getting harder. You can see the Highway Superintendent is getting frustrated, because every year we look at it, and he'll come with a list of roads, and we can't do it. But we can't do it with the unfunded mandates that Albany and the federal government is sending down. So that was my comment for tonight. I'm over that. Albany, I hate to say, was a very big disappointment, because out of everybody we met, very few people really understood the situation that we're in, and a lot of other towns that were up there with us. So we'll see how it goes. But we do need to concentrate on what we can control down here, and that's expanding our industrial and commercial tax base. We really need to look at our economic priorities out. So that being said, the first item on the agenda is about tax assessments and pilots. And Tom, before we get, I know you want to talk about tax assessments, but I would like to talk a little bit quickly about pilots. Because in the news, what you've been hearing is a lot of people say, or even the newspapers say, IBM gets a lot of state and local tax breaks. Well, they do get a lot of state tax breaks, and rightfully so. New York State is a very difficult state to do business in, but that's a state matter, that's not a town matter. When you talk about the pilot, which is a payment in lieu of taxes, IBM gives the town, we collect it for the town, the county, the library, the fire district, then Wapster Central School District, Arlington Central School District, and Pauling Central School, there's another, two more school districts. We collect the pilot payment for them, it comes through us, and the total, I think, was, Mark, about $8.3 million a year?
Eight point six five this year.
A year. And this is, we have a contract, we had a contract with IBM that started back in, I think, 1991, the original pilot contract. And Tom, would you like just to explain a little bit about what a pilot actually is and how that came about?
Sure. What happens is, when the, either the state or Dutchess County wants to do economic development, they have separate corporations. New York State calls it the New York State Economic Development Corporation. Dutchess County is our Industrial Development Corporation. And what they do is, they have the power to waive mortgage taxes, sales taxes, all kinds of different incentives that they can give. But what they do to do that is, they, this, one of these agencies actually takes ownership of the property. So that the IBM facility here in East Fishkill currently is actually technically owned by the Industrial Development Agency of Dutchess County, and previously it was owned by the New York State Economic Development Corporation. And they have to do that for the mortgage financing, reduced rates, no mortgage tax, et cetera. But immediately upon them taking title of the property, they're entitled to be tax exempt under New York State law. So the legislature recognized, well, that's not really too fair to the local community. So what they came up with was the requirement that when one of these agencies takes title, within 60 days, they have to have an agreement for payment to the local communities in lieu of taxes. And the way that normally works is that the agency allows the business, like IBM, to negotiate with the local municipality to come up with the agreement. But what our agreement has always done is been based on what they would have been paying had they been on the assessment roll. So that the original pilot, there was appraisal work done, they came up with the amount, what the taxes would be if they were on the roll, and that's how it started, that was the payment. And just like in a regular assessment process, if they had vacancies, if they weren't using a building, et cetera, there was a method to adjust.
And let me just break in, if I may, under the old pilot agreement, which expired, which we renewed actually in 2012, replacing the old one, which only had, I think, another year to run.
Right.
We replaced it with a new pilot. The old one, we used to have annual meetings with IBM to talk about their occupancy. They'd come in, they'd bring maps and show the whole, and there's a lot of vacant space over there, and they had thresholds, that if it was lower, they would get a break on their pilot, so many percent, or if they were increasing, it would be. It always seemed to stay right in that area there.
Right, that's correct. And then when we negotiated the new one, we felt that that was a risk factor for the town, because there's a lot of vacancies, their contractors are less, et cetera. So under the current pilot, the only way there's any downward adjustment in the pilot amount is if they actually demolish a building.
Demolish a building, yeah. Which we did that to encourage redevelopment of the site, because these are some very, some of these buildings, especially the ones that were noted in here, 310, and I think it was 320, were built back in the '60s and '70s, and they were very hard, under today's standards, to redevelop. So taking them down, that was kind of an incentive for redevelopment over there.
Correct. And it also means that the building really is never going to be used, and to demolish it. And the other point I think we should make is, sometimes we hear that IBM's investing, you know, $500 million. Well, that's not going into the concrete and brick.
No.
That's going into high-tech equipment within the buildings, and under New York State law, you can't tax or value.
Right.
Things that can be moved.
That's not part of the assessment.
Correct. So even though these buildings have very expensive investment in them.
Yeah.
80% of it is really in the high-tech equipment, which is movable.
And not valued, not valued at.
So under the terms of the pilot, they make an annual payment, oh, and then, so what we found in 2012, when we were in this, that with a new appraisal, and the town is fortunate in the town to have Don McGrath live, and he's of McGrath Appraisals, and he is one of the preeminent appraisers in New York State.
Yep.
New York City recognizes him as one of the five appraisers outside New York City that they use for land acquisitions, scenic cuts, and use in, you know, major appraisals. So he usually lends his expertise to us. And what he found in an analysis of IBM, when the old pilot was about to expire.
Do you remember?
Is that they were actually paying more than what they would have if they were on the assessment roll.
Yeah.
So you will notice in the current pilot, that at the beginning, there was a slight adjustment, and that they will be paying $8.35 million for the balance of the pilot, except that in year 11, there's a cost of living increase built in. And then that money goes to the school district, $6 million, the county gets a million, the town gets about $940 million.
Yep.
The fire district gets $203,000, and the library gets $66,000. So all the tax entities get their proportionate share in the same proportion as their taxes are against all of our homes.
Against all their taxes.
Right.
Now, what happened was, when we realized, when we brought this on, as Tom said, this was basically this transaction between IBM and New York State with the original pilot agreement.
Correct.
The town was not involved, and the pilot was crafted soon after. The realization was that we were going to get clobbered with IBM just coming off the tax rolls. But what this does, this gives us a continuity, a revenue stream. You know how much you're going to get. It's good for us, it's good for the, it's good for the company, it's good for IBM. And I think, you know, we just received a check last week for two point, what was it, Mark, 2.23 million or something like that?
Right, about 2.3 million.
Yeah.
Of which, almost a million of it.
Comes to the states in the town of East Fishkill. And then come the school top taxes, we'll be getting another check for probably a little more than $6 million, which will go to the Wapster Central School District. So, you know, I don't want people to think that, oh, the town just gives IBM all these tax breaks. I think, and speaking, working with Don McGrath and the IDA, that actually, this is a very fair arrangement with us and the company, IBM.
And this also, if everyone will remember, a few years ago, in Poughkeepsie with the IBM, there was a major tax surcharge that were accumulated. They were resolved, but it cost the taxpayers there millions of dollars in refunds to IBM. And the pilot prevents the challenge in the tax surcharge. So it does, as you say, Mr. Supervisor, keep everything stable for that time period.
Yeah.
And keeps us out of the jeopardy of, like Poughkeepsie had, the SPAC and Kill School District, debt of borrow.
Yeah.
To pay the money back, and, well, they had other issues, but it caused a tremendous impact on their taxes.
Absolutely. And as a matter of fact, then Supervisor, Pat Myers, who after they signed the agreement with the pilot, I said, Pat, this is probably the best thing you've ever done, because they were going back, I think they had three major surcharges against the town of Poughkeepsie. And what happened, which was unfortunate with their pilot, which we didn't let happen with our pilot, we renegotiated our pilot while our other pilot was still in effect. They didn't have a pilot, they based their pilot actually on the assessed value that was levied on them in court. So they got a pilot, but it was, and you'll see, their pilot is a lower rate than ours. Our value, ours is valued higher. So, you know, New York State does what New York State does, but the town of East Fishkill and I think our pilot agreement, we don't like give tax breaks to IBM, and I think, in my opinion, and I hope in the opinion, I think in the opinion of our professionals, this is a very fair tax agreement. So just wanted to get that out there. Marc, did you want to mention anything else? I know we just kicked this around a little bit lately, we've been talking about it.
No, other than I do agree that it's a fair agreement, and it provides predictability and stability both for IBM and for the town.
Okay, thank you. And so, anybody on the board?
May I add something to this?
Certainly.
Well, I did a little research on this. I just want the community to know a little background history about IBM, and how the state dealt with IBM from the beginning.
Hmm.
I came across a memorandum of understanding. I don't know if you're familiar with it?
Yeah, the MOU's in here.
I'm sorry?
The MOU's, I believe, is in the original contract.
Correct. And this was a different resolution, like you said, Mr. Supervisor, East Fishkill was not part of the whole discussion. It was between New York State and Dutchess County. And basically, if I could read a few paragraphs, IBM Microelectronics Division will upgrade. These are some stuff that the state gave IBM to open the doors and produce jobs in the Hudson Valley. They got a lot of money from the state, and a lot of tax, tax refunds.
Did they say, did they say how much?
Well, in this document over there, I will go through it briefly, and it's a resolution. Now, therefore, in consideration for the following, the parties intend to understand the following. IBM commitment, IBM will undertake this project as more particularly set forth year in. 100 mm water facility, which is a water project. Division will upgrade building 323 in the Hudson Valley Research Park in East Fishkill. New York has next to generating 300 mm water facility. The water project targeted for the first water start the second half of 1999 will retain 1,000 and 100 employees and create 400 new jobs by December 31st, 2000. IBM will provide a capital investment of $660 and $700 million for the water project. Then there was Section B, Global Services Support Center Relocating Global Services Project. IBM will establish Services Support Center to building 330D in the Hudson Valley. The Global Services Project will retain 100 employees and create 300 new jobs by December 31st, 2004. IBM will invest $10 million in the Global Services. Water project based on IBM investment of $660 and $700 million in its commitment to create 400 jobs in connection with the water project is prepared to make available to IBM the following assistance. $1,500 job creation grant from the state, $1 million infrastructure grant to help defray the cost of necessary site infrastructure investment in accommodated water project, $6,500 capital grant, $800,000 training grant to assist IBM with its training needs in water project. The training grant may not exceed 50% of eligible training costs. To further facilitate IBM training needs, ESDC, which we mentioned before, will facilitate the company access to services provided by New York State Department of Labor, DOL, can assist in screening and recruiting of qualified employees and possible assist with the training of eligible candidates for employment. That is tax abatement. ESDC is willing to enter into sale, sale, something transaction with IBM, by building 323 of the Hudson Valley Park, and thereby act as a conduit for real property tax abatement and sale tax abatement for eligible expenses as determined under New York State law for 15 years. They given money for waste treatment. Dutchess County IDA grant, ESDC will work with the Dutchess County IDA as to provide $1 million in grants. The grant will be allocated as follows. Approximately, there's a percent over here, for the job grant, and approximately 20% for its education grant to local school to establish an educational program relevant to water waste projects. That is Global Services Project. This was based, given $800,000, $800,000 job creation grant, $400,000 training grant under terms and conditions set forth above. Tax abatement, ESDC is willing to enter into sales, leaseback transaction with IBM for building 330D for the Hudson Valley RVP, and therefore act as a conduit for real property tax abatement and sales tax abatement for 15 years. They get credit corp project based upon IBM commitment to invest $10 million in the credit corp project. ESDC is prepared to make available to IBM the following assistance. $1,500,000 job creation grant, $3,500,000 capital grant, tax abatement. ESDC is willing to enter into sale, leaseback transaction with IBM for a former, former water facility in North Castle, and thereby act as conduit for real, real property tax abatement for a period of at least five years, and as many as 15 years, provide sales tax abatement for 15 years. That is in this paper over here. In addition, in an EDZ, New York State offers an employment intensive tax credit of 3% of due same capital investment. This tax credit is deductible by corporations in each of the next three years, exceeding your investment, as long as your employment has increased with the EDZ. ESDC estimates this credit to be worth 9% to IBM final investment into the water project. Additionally, on the water project, New York State wage tax credits could be worth $1,380,000. This additional program is resolved in significant cost saving for IBM, and we encourage you to consult your tax advisors. IBM, in this document, has added even tax credits for furniture, equipment, and this is all documented in this program. If you want, I'll continue reading. Even in the energy, the way they buy energy, let's work with this ad. ESDC will work with Central Hudson Gas and Electric and the Public Service Commission to ensure that IBM is offered a competitive rate for new electrical load. The target rate is 20% below the current SE 13 rate tariff that will be provided for a period of 10 years.
Okay.
ESDC will also assist IBM in guiding an application to power, for power for jobs in Dutchess and Westchester County.
Okay.
This is a document given.
Councilman, your point is?
My point is that, yes, IBM is giving us money, yes, IBM has used a lot of taxpayers' dollars to commit to create a job in our community. And has failed us to do so. IBM, IBM, by the fact that it has accepted tax dollars, it should be known to our community that it's really, has provided jobs, but right now, they're pulling out of our community. And that's a disaster for East Fishkill, first of all. And right now, as we all know, there is a deal going on with IBM and Governor Cuomo, where facing out another probably 3,500 jobs at the East Fishkill side.
How many, how many people are working there, are employed there?
About 7,000 now between, in the Hudson Valley, overall.
How many?
7,000.
How many in East Fishkill?
Probably, I don't know, maybe 3,000, 4,000.
Probably 35, 3,500, something like that. A couple, if I.
What I wanted to present to the community is that, for years, we're made to believe that IBM has been bread and butter for our community, which it is, but IBM also has used taxpayers' dollars to create those jobs. And right now, I'm not committed to do so any longer. So yes, they are giving us these tax dollars, but this is a revolving door, where tax dollars have been used and are returned to our community. So I just wanted to present to the community of East Fishkill some truth beyond IBM.
Okay. And that, and that document was the 1998 memorandum of understanding?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to be sure of that. Just a little bit, we could just talk a little bit about this, and I'm not going to say anything about, as I said before, New York State and what they do. I'm just trying to say, show that the town of East Fishkill, the pilot agreement, the town of East Fishkill is not providing tax breaks to IBM. And I understand the councilman's concern. Obviously, we've seen IBM has ramped up in the past. Their Global Services was one of their high-flying divisions for a few years, and now they're obviously cutting that back. And yeah, we're not happy to see what's happening with IBM. I know IBM's electric bill is $3 million a month, so I guess they really didn't get that good a break with whatever agreement they had with the PSC, because they still seem to pay a very high electric bill over there. And I understand the 323 fab that was constructed, and I believe a lot of those tax deferments, I believe the sales tax and that, that was a $3 billion project. So that was, just to put things in perspective, that was a very large project. And when you talk about IBM employment, one thing, and believe me, I'm not, it's not that I'm a big fan of IBM, but I want to put things into perspective. IBM is a corporation like any other corporation. Back in the old days, when Watson Senior had it, it was a family-run corporation. It is not anymore. It's a corporation out to make money like any other corporation. But I would point out that the vendors, the companies, if you just look at the headcount over there, say, 3,000 people over at the IBM's complex, but there's many, many vendors that service the equipment, sell the equipment, apply materials, companies like that. So if you just look at the headcount, yes. And also, I would point out that back in the days, when I was growing up in East Fishkill, and the parking lots were full, you had people working on a line, where that kind of manufacturer could be done by people on the line, but the manufacturer scale has gotten so small, it is all automated, and that's how the whole industry is going. it is all automated, and that's how the whole industry is going. But they still do provide a lot of jobs and a lot of work for support, for engineers supporting what's going on. The equipment, I believe the equipment over, the 323 fab was, was well over probably $2 billion just in equipment alone. So, you know, understanding that, yes, New York State did whatever they did to give them incentives. I know they did waive sales, sales taxes on equipment and, and construction materials and such, but again, I think that IBM does provide business to the town of East Fishkill. But obviously, they're a corporation and they're going to go, you know, I don't want to see them go. I'd like to see if we could, if they'd sell the fab to another company, I'd be happy with that, too. I don't want to lose the fab plant, but that remains to be seen, and we'll see what the governor's going to do.
Well, I like to say that I agree with the councilman that, you know, it's kind of disgusting how IBM gets all these tax breaks from the state, and anybody watching this should call your state lawmaker because it's not our decision. We do not do this. We do not give the breaks to IBM. The state gives it. And I agree with our councilman, we shouldn't do it unless the jobs are going to be provided here. And trust me, I agree with you, too, that for many years, we benefited and we still do benefit. I'm thankful that you have a good pilot program here, that we are guaranteed that money, even if they do leave. But how, how long is our program for, the pilot?
Well, that's a good question. I mean, the pilot that we signed in 2012 was 15-year agreement, and Tom, if they were to sell the fab plant, we couldn't be sure that that would go--
The pilot ends as soon as IBM, or as soon as the Industrial Development Agency no longer holds title. And obviously, the example we have is the West Complex. It was sold--
Right, okay.
And that's now on the tax rolls and it's vacant, it's deteriorating.
$7.5 million is valuation.
And, and it was originally sold by IBM for $14 million, and then there was a mortgage foreclosure on those people who bought it. It was an auction, and it's down now to $7.5 million, and it's deteriorating every day. And that's not in a pilot because it's not owned by an industrial development agency.
So, at some point, even as we speak, if the East Complex was to come out of the IDA, then it would go back on the assessment rolls at whatever valuation that, that would be. So, that would be a challenge to us. I'm still happy with our pilot. I don't want people saying, oh, guess why I read in the paper, they say state, local governments are giving IBM tax breaks, because I don't think we're giving them tax break. I think we've entered into a very reasonable agreement with them. And my problem, and this is one thing, and I brought this up to the state, but nobody wanted to hear, why can't New York State be friendly to all large corporations? Just lower the barriers to everybody. That's why you don't have to give, have EDCs or give a special break. Just level it for everybody, but that's not New York State.
It's not a very friendly business climate.
Exactly.
We're all suffering for that.
Yeah, we are, yeah.
The letter that we sent to Governor Cuomo, I mean, I mean, yeah, Governor Cuomo was very well put, and that shows the point that right now he's trying to pull jobs away from the lower Hudson Valley. It's a, it's a political move. It's before election, he's trying to get the votes of the northern states and the western states, but at the same time, pointing this out is exactly where we're going today. We're giving these big tax breaks to this corporation. They're using us, and when they can no longer use us, they, they say, you know what, goodbye. So, the point is that it should be given to everybody, even to the small business, so that it could come in East Fishkill and do business--
Absolutely.
And take those tax breaks and use them to create jobs. So, this document over here that I presented tonight is just to present that, that there is unfairness in the system, and this should be changed. I mean, we have to work, I mean, bring more business in our community.
It should be changed for, and you know what, there's my problem, if there should not be tax breaks, it should just be a reasonable tax system--
Correct.
--for everybody.
Correct.
And, and we'll see what happens. But again, getting back to my earlier comments, we really have to work whatever we can do to expand our industrial and commercial tax base, so. All right, well, that's it. I just wanted everybody to understand, and it just does get me when they, you know, the papers refer to the local tax breaks given to IBM, and I, oh, it is a difficult situation. Tom, you want to talk a little bit about assessments? We're good now? We've covered assessments, so we're good with that. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Second on the agenda, we're going to discuss pursuing claims to obtaining funding for a water system in the Route 52 area, and Tom, that one you can talk a little bit about, being the gas station down there and--
Well, on Lake Drive and 52, we all know that the former gas station there had a tank leak and it contaminated the groundwater, not only of the site itself, but also approximately 10 to 12 homes have port systems and filter systems. And enforcement action was begun by New York State DEC and the New York State Spill Fund and through, and this has been going on almost 10 years or more. And what happened was that the property was sold to a new party who has an arrangement with the state to clean up the site itself. The tanks have been removed, the groundwater is being filtered, and in exchange for that, the state gives that property owner, the new property owner immunity from any claims due to the contamination. That property came before the town planning board over the course of the last two years, and what we attempted to do in that process was to seek, try to get some water service for the residents who have the polluted wells in the back. So, that developer has agreed, as part of his approval of the project, to bring a town water main from the far side of Route 52, under 52, through his property to the rear, which then would give us a source of water for that area. In conjunction with that, we have reached out on several occasions to the prior owners and finally did arrange a meeting with their attorney, it was Botini Fuel, and we met with them approximately three and a half months ago, and we told the attorney and the town's plan would be is to create a water system there to, at minimal, clean up, at least give the 10 wells access, and in so doing, it would open up water to a significant part of that community. And we're looking for them to fund it. Either they build it, turn it over to the town, because obviously, the people who have been impacted shouldn't bear the cost of it. We were assured that they would give due consideration to our proposal. They agreed to share certain test materials with us, et cetera, and I followed up with them a few times. We finally received a letter just the other day.
A very disappointing letter.
Very disappointing letter, and it contained very few pieces of test results, and basically, they said, oh, we're more than willing to cooperate, but we really want to know what you want us to do. Well, I don't think we could have been clearer. So, obviously, something more has to be done to get their attention. We're a little frustrated with the, the state because during the planning board process, we reached out several times to DC and to the State Controller's Office, which administers the spill fund, because our understanding is they're holding over $2 million in, in a fund--
$2 million?
--from the prior owner to pay for these kinds of things. So, we have to shake everybody loose to get these people some relief.
And how do we shake them loose?
Well--
Ask, ask the attorney, how do we shake them loose?
Well, what do lawyers do? I think that what I'd like the board to consider is to consider authorizing a lawsuit on behalf of the residents of that area against the prior owners under the theory of a public nuisance because they contaminated the water. They've now caused this nuisance, and also under the navigation law of the state, to hold them responsible. And I think that the, the local residents may not have the stature or wherewithal to take on this kind of a giant, and I'm not talking about, you know, a huge thing, but I do think that that's something the board might consider because I don't know any other way that you're going to get everybody's attention after what we've tried already.
And I think if it's only $2 million in the spill remediation fund, that, that will go rather quickly if anybody else does come forward, so I think we should probably be right up front and get this taken care of early before there's a line forms for this money. So, I don't know if the board's got any thoughts on it, but we need to shake them up, we need to get some action done, the money's being held, so if you're okay. And what would we do, pass a resolution authorizing this action?
Yeah, and I think we do it initially, it would just be to send them a claim letter and to tell them that, you know, and with the authorization attached, and that might at least get the state agencies more to the table. I just think we have to get some leverage with them.
Okay.
Tom, would, would initiating this case be from the town or from the people?
Well, that's a good question. Basically, it would be in the name of the town of East Fishkill on behalf of those residents. We may have to ask one or two of them to join in to protect us on standing issue--
Okay.
But usually, a, a public nuisance claim can be made by a governmental agency on behalf of its citizens.
And as far as the legal cost, will it be incurred by the town, or we put additional cost, or will the cost come from the fund?
Well, if you're successful, the law would allow you a recovery from the fund for your legal cost, but obviously, at the, the initial stages--
The initial will come from us.
--the town would have to be willing to front something.
And we have, and we have a legal budget anyway, with little contingencies for things like this. So, I would think it'd be prudent for us to go ahead, and if we're successful, get reimbursed from the proceeds.
Well, these people in Lake City have waited long, long, long enough, I mean.
Yeah.
And so, the first step is to send a notice of claim?
Right. It would be to, to have a resolution, the board's intent to, you know, pursue it, then we would send that with a, a letter, a claim letter to all the parties, including DC, the state control. We wouldn't be suing DC and the state controller, but we'd be advising them of it--
Right.
--and then send it to the polluting party.
So, maybe the notice of claim would be--
I think that might create a, a different level in the discussions, because right now, they're just kind of disregarding us.
Yeah. So, if the board's comfortable with that, I'd put that on the agenda for the voting meeting at the end of this month. And obviously, this, as with anything else that we talk about, if you have any questions in between now and then, you know, feel free to contact our professionals, you know, if you have any worries or concerns. That's what they're here for.
John, how much do we have in the fund, legal fund, you said, in, in a budget that is--
Oh, I don't know. Mark, what's in the legal budget? We always have little contingencies.
About $140,000 annual budget.
$140,000, something like that. Right. Go ahead, Mark.
Well, there's the subcontractor budget--
Right.
--and Tom's budget, so the total is about $140,000. I don't know--
How it's broken up.
--how much of that is going to be yours and how much would be--
We'll, we'll provide, before the meeting, I can provide you with an estimate--
Okay.
--and then that will give you better comfort though, because there may be, we may be able to utilize the services of an environmental firm that would do it at a reduced rate because of the, that's what they do with these kind of polluting cases, so.
I think we could find the money on behalf of, for the people of Lake City. I think we could find the money to do this, so. I'm not talking about going to any multimillion-dollar lawsuit, obviously, but I think we could spend enough money to start moving forward with this. You know, I think, as Nick says, they've waited long enough, and if we were just going to wait around, it's not going to get, nothing's going to happen, so. We'll get this moving, and Tom, you'll get some better idea what the costs of--
Absolutely.
And we're just doing a notice of claim and just a formal adoption from the town board of resolution to go this way, so. I think initially, it's going to be rather, rather reasonably priced.
Yes.
Okay. Are we good with that?
I am. I mean--
Tom?
Clean water is, isn't it just like a fundamental right? I mean--
Yeah, and the fact that the money is there, the, nothing's been done in, for so many years, it just feels like, you know, if we don't do something, it's just going to stay the same, so. Manny, okay with that?
Yeah.
Councilman Maranaro?
Yeah.
Okay. All righty, good. Number three, I did want to talk a little about the Cannon Water Project across the street. We did have a meeting yesterday. EPA had been after us for, ever since December, to meet with them. They're still interested in including the, the Hope-O-Precision Superfund Site to be serviced from this area, and we met actually with DC, Lorenzo Thantu, the project managers. We set up several meetings since in December and January. We finally met yesterday, and they are very, very interested in having the Cannon Property supply water for the, the Hope-O-Precision Superfund Site. So, and there's other, other, I mean, everybody, see, you've, you've read the, the engineer's report, there's a lot of situations that we can attend to with our water. So, Scott, if you'd like to talk a little bit about it?
Yeah, and just quickly about the property across the street, the Cannon Property. I think when we first started exploring the wellfield, the potential of a wellfield, really, the crux of it was Ryan Drive, what about a year or a year and a half ago?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
They have been looking at multiple sources, municipal sources. We had steered them towards Four Corners, which is an existing system, and, you know, they said it was too far, and, you know, right around that time, the town acquired, you know, the property across the street. We had spoke to, you know, some hydrogeologists who felt, you know, there was a, a strong possibility of a, of a strong source there. The town board, you know, voted to have a hydrological study done. LBG was the low bidder in that, and they went ahead and did that study. Following the study, we went ahead and, and did a exploration with some test wells, gravel and rock, and at that point, the culmination of that was that we could provide at least a million gallons of water, you know, across the street.
A day?
A day, million gallons a day. And we tried to do that at the minimal, you know, expense as possible, just to be able to provide that to the EPA, to say we had a viable water source, and that was about a year ago, I think we had that meeting. At that meeting, you know, the tone really did sound as though EPA was ready to go forward at that point. You know, we had, we had made that initial investment, but also, right around that time, some other problems, you know, popped in and crept into the picture.
Dutchess County Water being one of them?
We have a, a pollutant problem in the county line coming down from Poughkeepsie in that the chlorine--
Trihalomethane.
Chlorine comes into contact with organics in the water from the river, and by the time it gets through the storage tank and, you know, X amount of miles down to Hopewell Glen, it reacts with those organics, and that creates trihalomethanes, which is carcinogen. So, you know, since that time, some violations have gone out, it's been a very, you know, sensitive issue at Hopewell Glen, so, you know, we've been looking to see, you know, what can we try to do to resolve that. As far as Poughkeepsie goes, I think they're looking at an $18 million filtration project, and we're not quite sure exactly when--
Yeah, or who's going to pay for it.
--if and when it's going to get completed.
Yeah.
And, and we do know that out-of-district users pay a lion's share of, you know, infrastructure costs, so even if they do fix it, you know, they're going to bump a lot of that cost to us. So, so that problem crept up. For years, we've really had a problem at Revere Park. We explored an alternate wellfield at Lake Walton. We, we looked at that, trying to talk to the bank who took that property and to take a step back. When the developer was looking at that property, we were working with that developer to, you know, get a, a good yield out of the wells, put storage in and help supplement our wellfields in that northern area of town. But, you know, they went under, the bank took the property back, the wells are sitting there. We contacted LBG, who actually had done the study on those wells. We were hopeful that, you know, for a minimal expense, we could get those wells going and, and tie those into Fishkill Plains. Turns out, they're under the influence of surface water, they're very shallow, about 30 to 40 feet deep, and we didn't feel like we wanted to bring that kind of water into--
Our system.
--our system. So, so, so we passed on that. So, it still leaves us with Revere Park that is, is really down to one well, and they have a surface water influence, problem. We have now potentially a need across the street if, if we do sell off some surplus property for development. The Hamlet is maxed out right now, we have no excess water. For years, Church Street, that area, as they asked by Frankie's Market to, to connect, and Border Health, you know, won't let us, you know, extend service to any more people in the Hamlet. So, so you look at the whole big picture, you know, and I've listed all the projects. Another one is Shenandoah, right around this timeline.
Yeah.
You know, they, they went to Fishkill at the time--
Yeah.
--and, you know, now we've heard about the problems with the water in Fishkill, and even though the chlorides are trending down, Border Health still has a limit on how much water we can take, which is restricting our development in that area. As businesses want to come in and ask about water, Border Health right now has our hands tied with that.
Right, right.
Not to mention, they've escalated the rate substantially--
Hugely.
--heading into 14.
Thank you, town of Fishkill.
And not to mention that in order for them to give us more water to fulfill their 80,000 gallon a day contract, they're going to have to do millions of dollars' worth of improvements, and it's the same thing.
Who's going to pay for that?
Out-of-district users bear the brunt of that expense. So, you know, when you take all these different projects, existing and proposed, and you look at the water source that we have, we went ahead and drilled more wells. We have now a second production well along with the first one. We actually tried to put a third production well in, but during the pump test, unfortunately, it collapsed, so we're down to two. Not that that third one can't be retrofitted, but, but with just the two alone, we have enough water to supply Ryan Drive, Hopewell Glen, the Hamlet, Shenandoah, you know, every, Revere Park, and, and another system I didn't mention was Whirly Homes, even though we don't own it, we know that's kind of a ticking time bomb over there that we could potentially provide water to. So, we're at the point now of, you know, trying to move forward with this project. Now, we have EPA that's hopefully back to the table, so I think the timing, the timing is good. And, you know, hopefully, we can continue to move forward and, and everything kind of comes together in a couple of years.
Now, one of the things we have been doing, that our engineering department's been doing, is we have a modeling program that we got from another company, and every time I turn, every time I go down there, I have to ask, what size pipes-- And every time I turn, every time I go down there, I have to ask, what size pipes we using, where's the tank going, and how's the water going? But we're doing all kinds of iterations to find out the most efficient way to build a townwide water system from across the street.
Right. And the other thing I didn't mention is many of our systems run on pumps. So it's electricity 24/7 running these pumps, the Hamlet, Revere, Hopeful Glens from the county.
Fishkill Plains.
Fishkill Plains is on pumps. And if, you know, Fishkill Plains should ever go down, this would also provide redundancy to Fishkill Plains, which is the largest system we have in town. So with the elevation that we have across the street, again, the site provides us, you know, a location to put a water storage tank that we can run gravity.
Yeah.
And that's also going to reduce, you know, our energy consumption, so.
Revere Park, that's the one on Lake Walton Road?
Uh, Revere Park, I think, is kind of like on both sides, yeah.
Okay. You were mentioning something about a property with wells taken over by the bank?
That was the old Lake Walton.
Correct.
Lake Walton, yes.
Do we know how much that property is worth? Is, are we entertaining the idea of buying it?
No.
For the wells?
No. We actually had talked to them about dedicating or reaching an agreement.
It's part of the approval, but it has preliminary planning board approval for 92 lots.
And then they went into bankruptcy. And part of their approval was that once they developed the wellfield, they would have to give it to the town. However, you know, so that would still be there if somebody comes along to develop it. But the problem is that it has this groundwater infiltration, so unless they developed it with deeper wells, it probably wouldn't be something that would exist.
Well, we actually did speak with them, and we said, why don't you turn over the wells to us now, and we will provide for you water when we're done.
Right.
But we found out we had this groundwater infiltration problem, which made it not cost effective.
Right. Typically, when a developer goes in, and we did the same thing across the street, the cheapest, you know, test you can do is to go with a gravel test.
Mm-hmm.
And if you can determine you have enough water out of your gravel, you know, the gravel well is pretty expensive, but, you know, it's kind of a guaranteed shot. The risk is when you get down to like 40 feet, even though you're demonstrating for the Board of Health and your, you know, your secret process that you've got all this water, you know, it doubles in the details, the real fine print, you know? And only when you get to that, do you see, well, you know, you potentially have the surface water influence. We had to spend about $350,000 to run a pipe from those wells over to Fishkill Plains, still had the surface water infiltration problem. And, you know, being that shallow, if a truck tips over on Lake Walton Road, you know, you're suspect at that shallow depth for, you know, for further contamination. So, you know, the decision we made is not to invest in those wells, given the risk and...
The risk with them.
So Scott, is the understanding that for the water that we get, the wells across the street, you're able to supply water to the rest of the sites? Is that where we're going with this?
All the sites that I've listed there.
Okay. And you're saying that we do not need any pumps that are going to run on electricity, that we could do it?
No, there's two facets. You have the pumps that go in the well.
Correct.
They always run on electricity.
Correct.
But once you bring the water out of ground, it goes into a storage tank.
Correct.
If the storage tank is that grade, now you need booster pumps to force that water, you know, throughout distribution. But if you can have an elevated tank...
You still have to pump it up there. Well, you pump it from the well?
You pump it to the tank, but now everything runs off gravity. So instead of like running two sets of pumps off electricity, you're only running one.
Will you be able to run those pumps with solar panels?
Um, we have not explored that. I mean, I guess there's a potential for that. We looked at that at the sewer plant.
We've looked at it across the street, yeah.
You know, and maybe we want to revisit that, because I understand the costs have just jumped up incrementally again.
Yeah, we just found, we just got our electric bills, so...
But I know at the time, it didn't make sense to do the sewer plant, and we have a large roof area.
Yeah, that really would have lent itself well, too.
And it didn't make sense. So it's certainly something, as we get it further on, we can explore them.
We could use the surrounding areas for solar panels. I mean, if we have room, not only the roof, you could use the, and you could turn those panels during the day to capture as much sun.
I don't know that that would probably, I probably wouldn't put them on the tank, but if any place, the sewer roof is the place to put them.
That is the place to put them, yeah.
Because electricity, as you know, I mean, everybody's talking about it today, it's not going to get cheaper. So in the long-term plan, we have to find a way to supply and not at a high cost, because we're going to have to pass those costs to whoever is using that water.
Yes.
Yeah, and we've looked at solar, we've looked at solar, and actually, I've been looking at solar for the town hall. But especially for the sewer plant across the street, that'd be a very big benefit, so.
So can I, Scott, all the different waters, Revere, Hopeful Glen, Hopeful Hamlet, Shenandoah, Ryan, Whirly, this would provide, what percentage would Cannon provide us with the usage and redundancy? And then how much do we have left if we need to expand?
The way it works out right now with the two wells that we know, well, we're waiting for the final pump test, but the numbers have come up, the yield have come up 430, I think 440 gallons a minute, which are strong wells. We still have the reserve for a third well, if we ever need it in the future. But just the two wells that we have right now, we can provide all of this. And to answer the question, if we have any excess, really comes down to the Ryan Superfund Site. Right now, their engineer is using a max factor of three. In other words, you have an average daily consumption and the hottest day in the summer type of consumption, okay? Typically, you use a factor of two, okay? Their average daily is around $100,000, so that would make a max of two. But their engineer is using a max of three. And again, I brought this up at the meeting the other day. If we use a max of three, it puts us like pretty much right at capacity with everything I've listed here, okay?
With redundancy, everything.
Yeah, exactly. That's with one well shut off and just one well pumping.
Which is what Board of Health requires.
Right. But if we get them down to a factor of two, which D.C. and Board of Health both agreed with, that's the right factor.
They agreed with that the other day, yeah. But what I would like to point out, if, say, anything was to happen, say, down at the IBM West, the old IBM West complex there, if the sports dome gets approved, or somebody else comes in there, that may be a big water user, we have the ability to put another well in, correct?
We can drill another well, or possibly fix the one that's collapsed and come up with another half a million gallons a day.
Okay. Because what I don't want to do...
The water's there.
Is be maxed out and have need, especially down in industrial area, where we could actually provide the water.
The decision is we could spend another $100,000, $150,000 rough and find that other well right now and prove it, but we don't need the water right now, and D.C.'s not going to permit it anyway, you know? So we're at a point where...
Because we don't have, because D.C. requires the need...
We don't have a need for it.
To show that they'll approve the permit.
So really, you know, it's nice to know you've got a well that you can just flip the switch on, but it costs money.
Yeah.
And right now, we really don't need it. I think the two wells are going to meet our demand.
But we do leave enough property there for drilling of a new well.
There's absolutely no question that we can find a third well.
Good.
Whether we fix the one that collapsed, which you can put a stainless steel telescope and screen in, you know, at a cost of 50 to 75, or you make decision, you know, the heck with that, let's just drill another one, you know? So now drilling, we drilled five wells, just to be clear, it's not as simple as just drilling a hole and finding all that water. We were very fortunate, you know, the first one was a home run. We drilled two more that weren't.
I remember.
Then the third one was a home run, and the fourth one, we thought was a home run until it collapsed, so, you know, but even batting 50, 60%, we're doing really good.
You were killing me with the gravel wells.
Yeah, I remember.
You wouldn't stop. And you finally, you finally drilled a rock well.
That's why we started there, it was the cheapest test.
Yeah, thank you.
But that's as fate would have it.
As fate would have it. You got to drive...
Scott drove me crazy with the gravel wells, so.
Scott, follow-up question.
Yes.
The town supervisor was talking about, as far as the industrial site, if we have to offer this property to some people coming in the community, the question of water is going to come up.
Yeah.
And is your understanding that there is more water, even though we don't drill? I mean, long-term?
If an industry came in and they said, we need a half a million gallons a day, we drill another well, we give them a half a million gallons a day.
So we could...
And they could bear, and they could bear the expense, I would imagine, of drilling that well.
Exactly.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So that is the possibility.
Absolutely. We would have had that right now if this other well didn't collapse. We were that close to having, because what happens, if you have two wells, you have to take one out of service. So it leaves you with the production of just the one well. If you have three wells, you take one, it literally doubles your production, because now you have two wells producing.
So very, very...
That's why we really would have liked to have the third one, because then we know we're set for the next 10 years, you know?
But we're very comfortable with the fact we would be able to provide more water.
We know it's there if we need to drill another one.
If I could make another suggestion, is it possible, when the planning board reviews possible companies that want to open up their doors, to propose some costs as far as the water?
That would be up to us, yeah. When they come into the town and they need to provide water, we would have a hookup fee. And that would take care of all their associated costs with providing them water over and above what we've already provided to our systems. Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, I guess the one thing I didn't cover, but it's in the report, is that with Hopeful Glen, they, as part of their approval, was going to build their own water storage tank there and their own pump station, et cetera. And, you know, we're trying to work with them, rather than for them to make their investment on that site, to make the investment on this site. So, I mean, the timing of that was really good, so.
Yeah, so if the EPA comes in, if Toll Brothers comes in, this will help lower our overall cost for the project.
And I believe the RFP, if we put that out right now, we have a condition that that developer will also contribute to the development.
And we will be getting the RFP on the project across the street. We're just wrapping up the details. I'll be getting that out to the town board probably next week for review and get your thoughts and feedback on, so.
How confident is the EPA that they're going to have the money for this? Because wasn't that a holdup?
I got to tell you, although they wouldn't commit, commit yesterday, or was it yesterday the meeting? Yeah, yesterday. Yeah, they seemed very positive. They seem very positive. It's in the next...
They need to get people's hopes up.
No, we don't want to do that.
For quite a long time.
What's that?
Right, I spoke, I spoke with their chief engineer, and they want a short list by early next week of local consultants. They want to have somebody on board in the next 30 days to start doing their modeling, because we really need their modeling to input with our modeling to make sure, you know, whatever direction we move, we don't do it twice. But it seems like they are definitely, you know, at least going to complete the design work, which is you have to do anyway.
Yeah.
And that's something it hadn't been willing to do really up till now.
No, I mean, yesterday, there was a whole different attitude, so it was really good to see. But they wouldn't say they had the money, they wouldn't commit to that, but they were very, very anxious to move. So that's all we can say.
See what happens. Just for them to move to.
Yes, we are, absolutely.
As far as Shenandoah, in your presentation...
Yes.
At the bottom of the page, you have development along Route 52 is impacted.
Yes.
What does that actually mean by that?
Well, as I said earlier, right now, even though we have a contract for 80,000 gallons a day with the village of Fishkill, not the village, I'm sorry, the town of Fishkill, Board of Health has put a limitation at 35,000 gallons a day. So right now, between the projects that are kicking around down there, we're right at that number, maybe even over that number. So another big company comes in, where are they going to get the water from?
And you have the estimated improvement cost toward the end of the presentation. Toll Brothers contribution, a million dollar?
That, that right now is...
We already have that money, is that the same money that we got for recreation?
No, no.
No.
And these are just estimates, we haven't solidified them yet, they're not...
Yeah. Now, what, we've had some preliminary discussions, and we know what the value of their tank is, we know the value of their pump station, we know the value of the improvements that they'd have to make on their site. And, you know, we've said to them, you're going to have to probably kick in even more than that, but I think marketing for them, it's worth it to get that tank out of there.
Yeah.
And the trihalomethane issue...
And take care of the water issue is huge.
Right, so I'm envisioning we're going to be right around that number with them.
But there's nothing in stone.
It's not written in stone, but we've had several talks, that they're definitely interested in participating.
So we'll see how it goes. You know, what we'll do is, because this is still kind of fluid with the discussions with EPA and Toll and everybody, keep everybody up to speed as to what's going on, so. But I think the property across the street was a very good acquisition for the town. And again, with the RFP for the senior housing project, we're just wrapping that up, and I'm hopeful by the end of next week, I can email that out to the board, so everybody can take a look at it, review it, come back, any questions, talk with us, the professionals, and see where we go from there. All right. Any other questions?
Just if, you have the draft still. I gave Gina a final today, so I see you're looking at the draft. So just in case anyone still has the draft.
Everybody out here should have the new one.
You should have a final.
Everybody out here should have the final, they were on the, on the table.
This is the final.
Are we good? Okay. So we have our, we have, I think we have a good idea where we're going to go. Tom, you're going to start on the legal aspect for the water for the Lake City project. And Scott, we're going to move forward on the Cannon Water Project. So with that, we're down to liaison reports. And Nick, planning and zoning, did you have anything you want to speak on planning zoning? I know Peter's not with us tonight, so I don't know if you...
Oh, yeah, I have a little report from Peter. Planning and zoning is, as well, they, we canceled one planning board meeting. It was not much on the agenda, but they're back into swing of things.
Oh, good.
I just wanted to make...
Nick, could I just, I want to ask Tom, whatever, what's going on with our lawsuit against the town for the cell tower? Have you guys heard anything on that?
Actually, what happened is, it had been scheduled for a conference several weeks ago, but the snow came.
Okay.
So even the judge canceled.
So even the judge canceled. And the conference is rescheduled for next week, and what that will be to date when a briefing schedule is made. And we'll probably have a decision on that in four to five months, I'm thinking.
Okay, okay, good. And Nick, I think our radio frequency expert.
Oh, yeah, he was excellent.
Very good. That was a good investment, I think.
Very good, yes.
Good, good.
And I just wanted to mention a few things about the unfunded mandate meeting you attended, but on the other side, that you and I met with Ron Hicks several weeks ago. He's the head of the Dutchess County Economic Development Corporation, and he was very helpful to us. And he mentioned that in the county executive's new budget, that there's going to be some funds in there for, to target areas like our IBM site, where we can try and, the county's going to try and work with the municipality to try and market to get new business to come to us. That if we could do our zoning changes that we've been proposing to, it would really help facilitate with the county, with those marketing funds, and we could get somebody else in, in there. Also, I know county executive Mark Molinaro and the chairman of the legislature, Rob Rollison, was in Albany today, met with the senate leadership, and they are trying to get some mandate tax relief for, I'm sorry, not for the energy tax that they just proposed. They're trying to get some funds for that. They are very hopeful that something good is going to come about that. Other, the other thing that I had was that Councilman Cassidy is not here, and Dennis Miller had a little note for me to read. Over the past 30 days, the primary workload for the highway department has been snow removal. We have also hauled in sand as well as mixing sand and salt in preparation for any new storm. We have also done some minor catch basin repair. We presently have a minimum of 35 catch basins in need of repair. Daily vehicle equipment repair as well as pothole filling are also on the schedule. So you just want me to read that?
And I hate to say, but after the winter we've had, and, yep, it's been, it's been rough on the budget, and it's been rough on the road. So we'll do our best to keep things moving.
Oh, there was one other thing I'd like to mention, that you sent out the email about the pie chart with the taxes.
Yes.
And just, we have our final breakdown. And for anybody living in Wapger Central Schools, your tax bill comes 68% of your total tax bill is for school taxes, 15% is for Dutchess County, 12% East Fishkill, the town of East Fishkill, 4% for fire, and 1% for library.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. And what we do is, we just wrapped up taxes, and everybody just paid their county, town, fire, library tax. And we like to get around this time of year, pie charts, figure out where we are and how, how we figure into our whole tax bill. And I think we're pretty, I mean, we're always trying to be wise with taxpayers' dollars to be efficient, but I think that says it all. And with the Wapger Central School District, with the pie chart, the Wapger Central School District being 68%, that's a large chunk of the tax, town tax bill.
Need somebody there to sharpen the pencil.
Yeah, yeah, great. Thank you, thank you, Councilman Alessandro. Councilman Franco, anything on the recreation fronts?
We had our two new members, Tammy Newman and Stephen Fells, on the Rec Advisory Board. They had their first meeting. They fit in nicely so far, first meeting, so. Other than that, we're all waiting for the snow to melt, so the kids can get outside and play.
Yes, I tell you, this has been a rough one. Was there any consideration? I know we're going to have Town Cleanup Day, was there any discussion about that? Are we going to be?
Other than April 5th, and everybody's hoping.
Okay.
And praying that it's going to be a nice enough day.
Good. We'll keep our fingers crossed on that. Excellent, great, thank you very much. Councilman Marinero, any report on Hillside Lake Board?
Yeah, there is some, some news, it's probably not good news. There's been some tests done on some, some of the catch basins around the lake, and unfortunately, two of them came out, came back positive for human fecal bacteria, I think.
Yeah.
I think the town engineer contacted Dutchess County Board of Health, and I guess we're trying to get involved, the, the state.
We're going to reply with D E C.
Yeah, they, but I don't, they weren't, they weren't catch basins that tested.
I just want to clarify, yeah, we, we did two rounds of testing. We initially, in the fall, we were going to do our catch basin cleaning with a vendor.
And let, and sub that out, have a third party do a catch basin.
And have a third party do it. And then we detected odors in those basins. So we picked a random 12 that had the strongest odor, and of those 12, one came back positive over on Fairview Road. Subsequent to that.
But let me just say, and that does not discharge the lake, correct?
That actually discharges across the street.
Discharges the other way.
Offsite, right. And we are following up on that. But right now, with the snow and everything, it's been a little, but we are following up with that. Subsequent to that, just a couple of weeks ago, when we were out there closing the valve,